I'd like to officially open the meeting of the school committee for a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. We have, there was a difference in the postings. The Board of Selectmen chose to, or had their posting at 6:30, so I would like to postpone our meeting until 6:30. Aye. We're adjourned until 6:30. Thank you.
We call to order the May 1st, 2013, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, a joint meeting with the school committee. We have a roll call, please.
We call President, Selecting Whitehead, Selecting Crook-Priano, Selecting Slater, Selecting Tyler-Moll, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, Selecting Alice Slayton, Selecting Holmes, who's not here as of yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to open the school committee meeting for the purposes of meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the 2014 budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, staying. We are open also.
Well, if you want to lead off.
Great.
It's your house.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. I think that it shows just how much these boards are willing to work together. The last couple of weeks, I think, have been difficult. I think that there's been a lot of conversation about the budget, about what is going on, about, you know, the difficult place that we're in. And from our last meeting, that thankfully was pulled together by the FinCom, I think we started moving in the right direction. This meeting specifically came out of a town meeting that we have not voted on a budget. The budget will be voted on June 8th to give our two committees an opportunity to review the budget and talk about how we can close the gap between the two. And hopefully, not even hopefully, we will go to town meeting on the 18th with a budget that I do hope and will ask for that will be supported 5-0-0 by both boards. So with that, I thought, I'll, you know, refer to you, but I thought for today's meeting that we would pretty much open up our meetings and then talk, you know, do any kind of opening statements if we needed to, but then really turn the meeting over to Barry and, Dr. Rubinovich and to Derek Sullivan. They, from what I understand in conversations that I have with Dr. Rubinovich, has, have been doing the hard work and have really been going through and taking a look at these budgets. And I think it's probably best if maybe they present to us and then open it up to both boards to ask any questions from each and then, and then kind of go from there and see how it, how really what the next step is, so.
Well, thank you, Chairman Vugan. I agree, that's probably the best way to start. But before we start, I see Mr. Heath is sitting over there observing. In large measure, we're sitting here tonight due to his efforts to try to bring consciousness about the budget itself to the fore for both of our boards. And I would be remiss not to acknowledge him and to thank him for his, his role in making this meeting happen. So, so thank you, Mr. Heath. With that in mind, I agree, it's probably time to hear from both Dr. Rubinovich and Mr. Sullivan.
Do you have a copy of?
I do. So, if I can, Derek and I have met at least twice over this and then talked on the phone and I left a note with them, continuing the work when I have to go to another meeting. He has passed out and I, hopefully the Board of Selectmen have it, everybody should have a copy of the town budget and there are two columns, FY '13 projected and FY '14 budget for discussion. And in this budget, this reflects the House budget that had some different numbers than the Governor's budget, particularly in charter school. And it, I bring it to you, so, I mean, this is the budget and it includes for discussion purposes, the number that was voted on by the school board, both in transportation and net school spending. In conversations with Derek, I created a document that I believe our folks have. Michelle doesn't, so if I can start it down this end. Jeff, you have that one, right, the one that's passing out, I think, yeah?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yes.
No, I don't have it.
And here is a second document coming with it.
And, sorry, just while those are being passed out, the one thing that I forgot to say in the very beginning is that, that we know that this meeting is about cutting. And I don't think that there is any member of any one of our boards that feel that there is any money to cut in, in our budget. But it is necessary for this year. Again, it's just, I didn't say that in the very beginning. What I hope, and, you know, we can talk about this maybe at the end or in a future meeting, that, that we work together to seriously help both of our administrators find new revenue for this town. I think that it's what we're lucky to do and something that we should absolutely do. So, I just didn't say that in the beginning, I thought it was important that this meeting, unfortunately, is about cutting, not about new revenue.
The documents that you have before you, and there are two of them, the first one with, which is a little larger spreadsheet, is a historical look from 2011 through anticipated 2014 of, of various costs. The first set of numbers are called in-kind costs. This is where you'll find the healthcare cost for school employees, the healthcare cost for retired teachers, unemployment costs, workman's comp costs, postage for sending out the checks to various people, the administrative costs that we pay towards various town employees on the town side's salaries. So all of that is factored into those in-kind costs. And then we have the net school spending appropriation, taken from, basically, town meeting appropriations, and the non-net school spending, which is transportation. That's what that number is. I totaled that number. I then, with Derek, found the total town spending for those same years. Now, again, in '14, that is the anticipated, given the deficit, that includes the $1,100,000 or $200,000 deficit. So if the budget passed unbalanced, that would be the number for spending. And so I then just divided the town spending into the total school spending and came up with a percentage, because that was one of the things I heard at a previous meeting, was the discussion about what is the percentage of spending. And so, as you can see, if we round up, it's 62% for three of the years. The reason 12 was down is the health holiday. That's why that number doesn't fit with the other numbers. The second piece of paper that you have has the deficit. According to this budget, the deficit is $1,169,094. 62% of that deficit is $724,838.28. 38% would be $444,255.72. I believe that the town was hoping to get to a 65-35 split. We wanted to be at the 62, and so, you know, I'm gonna compromise, let's split the difference. You know, there's three percentage points between it. We add one and a half to each, and instead of 62, the school department's at 63.5, and instead of at 38, the town is at one and a half lower than that, and it comes in at 36.5. And then you can do the math yourself from those numbers. That is a very simplistic way. We could spend days going through line by line, and the school department budget has about 35 pages and lots of line items. And I could go through and explain them all to you, and many of you have been on the FinCom before and have been in my office and gone through that process. But I really don't think it's appropriate for the superintendent to tell the town administrator we had a cut in his budget, and I don't think it's appropriate for the town administrator to tell the school department we had a cut. I believe we had two boards that are elected to do that work with their administrator. And so, that's my proposal, my analysis, and be happy to answer any questions. Derek, if you want to add, please, you know, anything that I might have missed from our conversations.
So we just have Derek. Yeah, we had a question, but I think you should go.
Thank you. And I think where I wanted people to understand the percentage point difference in there was, when I looked at the Upper Cape Cod Tech, even though it is educational, I did not assign a value to the school for that. However, I did not assign a value to the town. I took it out of the total budget and so that it realistically affected neither side. So when you had the total budget of approximately, called the total expenses $55,400,705, we would reduce that by the total of the Upper Cape Cod Tech, which brought it down to the $52 or $51 million number. And then I used that as the, where we would start with the percentages, which brought it to the 65%.
So that's why we were on a little different percentages. You know, I felt that, since this is, in my opinion, about the Wareham Public Schools and the money that we get to spend educating the children that go to our school system, we should not be penalized for the increases that Upper Cape gets because of the other towns that voted.
Did you have anything else, sir?
Honest difference of opinion.
Yeah, that's a, that's a clear one on. And I thought, when I was speaking about, I thought the, if we can use the simple term of fairest way, was to have it totally, completely removed, so that that was not a sticking point for, for all of us. I felt that would be, that could hang us up for, for hours on something that realistically, at the end of the day, is not the largest issue that, that we have, we're sitting here. The rest of it is, you know, the budget that has been brought forward is, I think this is the new starting point from where we go. We've seen probably about a dozen different budget documents, so I think this is the one that we go forward with, with whatever we're doing. And it has the last school committee voted number, and it has a town expenses on there. Throughout some of the last budgets, we were cutting and whittling down below a level-funded budget for the town side. Coming here tonight, I felt the most appropriate level was to have a level-funded budget of the town, which if you look at page three of five, you'll see the FY '13 projected is $10,264,110. Now, I'm calling the second column "level-funded" because a little over $99,000, almost $100,000. I'm sorry, can I just get, I don't know how I ended up with a copy of that. I passed it around, but.
Does anyone have?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Derek, is it okay if we share with the people in the audience if they want one?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, on that page, please.
It was three out of five?
Yeah, page three out of five.
Three out of five, yep.
Now, I'm still calling that a level-funded budget, even though we see the decrease, because there, we no longer have that large lease payment for the police cruisers. So I'd like to start at the $10,164,118 position.
Should we open up for questions? Hi. Mr. Slayton?
I initially wasn't sure what the Dr. Rubinovich's documents were going to be used for, but since he classified it as a, categorized it as a proposal, I have to respond to that by saying I categorically reject it, although I have great respect for the effort that went into it. By analogy, and it's very appropriate, given the time of year we have, if a family goes to a college and is told that the tuition is going to be $40,000 a year, and they are offered a financial aid package which brings that cost down to $20,000, no one would say that they are going to be spending $40,000. They would say they're going to be spending $20,000. When you, when we show the town that we're spending $25,000, $26,000, $27,000 on education, on net school spending, it is entirely misleading because $12,345,207 is coming to this town in what we'll call scholarship financial aid. So I would argue that the net cost to the town is in fact net of our Chapter 78. If you would like to net your unrestricted general government aid of $1,656,000, to, to adjust your calculation, that's fine with me. But the bottom line is, these percentages are a distortion of the true cost to the town of public education, because Chapter 70 must be netted into it in order to make it a fair comparison. I simply reject the proposal.
I think the simplest way to respond to that is, you're correct. We do have the general government, all told, approximately $2.1 million. Then what the general government also does is the one that collects the local receipts reimbursements, and that is their purpose of approximately $5 million. Little over that, if we take the Medicaid out of there, I'll give it $300,000 value, we're now closer to $6.8 million. Reduce the town's budget by that, and we are fair.
We're, I appreciate your counterproposal. It still is a whole lot better than the initial one that I reacted to. We could, we could get, go back and forth on whether, when someone is provided a service, they pay for it, or whether taxes in general are something that we want to net against spending. But you're, we're a whole lot closer with what you just said, that I could accept as a proposal, than the initial proposal made by our superintendent.
I think you may well rework the numbers. I don't think it'd be in the schools' favor. It'd be about $12 million to $3 million.
If we're dealing with the 55, I haven't, I haven't done the math. It's just, just a question of what you're, what you're taking.
Just the overall general government spending on the salaries and wages.
Oh, you mean as compared to the $10 million?
Yeah.
You're using it against the $10 million?
Yeah.
Then I have to start scribbling with the use of the six. I'll give you the 1.6, okay? Because the 1.6 is clearly state aid compared to the 12 that we get. Aid to aid. The taxes, the taxes are not aid. You're adding back all the taxes.
The excise taxes and such?
Local meals tax, all that, those are taxes. Are you going to start talking about property taxes next?
I could always make that proposal.
You could, and I reject it just as quickly.
So, I mean, just to, just to jump in just for a second, there is, there is a proposal on the table, and so I would ask if, instead of going back and forth, because it seems like that that could be a lengthy conversation over several, several days, talking about the revenue coming in, is there a counterproposal that you would have from a percentage basis or, or another idea?
Well, it would be, it would be pretty arbitrary, since this is the first time I've seen this document, for me to suddenly start scribbling with my calculator and pen to come up with, with a number. I could come up with one, but I haven't come, come up with one. But it's, it's something I'm willing to work on, but as, as a general principle, I think we're also stating something going totally in a different direction. So I reject the math, but I also reject the fact that everything in the budget is equally important. And that's what we're doing. What we're saying is, everything in the budget has equal importance, and therefore, everything should be cut equally. I reject that as a principle, too.
Right. I'll open up to the rest. I just want to, the only thing that I would say to that is, what I said in the very beginning of this, is that we are in a cutting mode and getting into a debate. And a cutting mode, I think, will ensue a lengthy conversation about the priorities of this town. I, I, well, I agree with you and welcome that, that conversation in regards to the priorities of this town and where we need to be spending the money. I think it's going to be very difficult to do that in a cutting discussion here going into June 18th. I think that it is absolutely a conversation that we need to have as a joint board when it comes to additional revenue coming into the town and how that money is spent. Just a comment that I'll make to that, but.
I actually agree with Jeff that Chapter 70 money is a pass-through. We wouldn't get the money if it wasn't for the schools, and it's really not a cost to us, you know? So that has to be taken into consideration. I totally agree with that, that that number has to be dealt with, because that is really not a cost to the town.
Thanks.
The money coming from the state office. And that has to be taken into consideration. When I mentioned the percentages, I'm dealing with my percentages based on not including Chapter 70. Because Chapter 70 money is money that's going to the schools no matter what. So that's my opinion, as far as the Chapter 70.
Other comments and questions?
I would just say, I'm not sure I understood all of what Jeff said, but I would disagree with the point that if there was a percentage, if this is going to be done by percentage, then it's not necessarily across the board, because then the town and the school would have to, and the town and the school would have to look at what that number is. Percentage becomes a number at that point, to me, Jeff. And it's not across the board to say, everybody's 15%, clear cut. You can reduce programs, you can cut departments to get to that number.
Absolutely.
So that's what I'm seeing. So once, once you agree on a number, right, it's not necessarily, I wasn't sure if I heard you say that or not, that's why I'm just mentioning that.
I don't think.
Then we set the priority and say, okay, we can do without X, right? And then you just have to get to that number. Is that what you were saying?
Technically, what I was saying is, that the average importance for everything on the non-school side is being equated with being essentially the importance of the school side. That's technically what I was saying. Now, within the non-school side, there are obviously, and debatable points, about what is more important within the non-school side. But the school side is one mission. And, I mean, for example, let's say all we did was provide police and education. Well, then, if that's all we did, and then they would be, you're essentially saying they're equally important. You could argue that case. But I think it's really difficult to say that the average importance of everything the non-school side does is equal to the school side. That was technically what I was saying.
To that, I would just sort of hearken back to Chairman Vugan's point, that next year we have to talk about revenue. That's the optimistic word. The, the other word is, is cuts. Very severe cuts, I think, absent a jolt of revenue that, whose providence we certainly can't predict. And so, I think the point you raise, the setting of priorities, the outreach to the town to, to guide both boards in setting priorities, because that's going to happen, need to happen with both boards, is certainly something that, let's just say, if we pass a budget on June 18th, that process needs to start June 19th. We are now in a, in a situation where, we're like the NFL. You win the Super Bowl on the first Sunday in February, and then you start thinking about your free agents the next day. We don't have the luxury going forward of putting things off. As we found out during this last budget cycle, we really need to have not everything buttoned down, but a pretty good sense of where we are by mid-December, in order to properly prepare the budget in accordance with the terms of the Charter. Because, you know, we learned that in, in this process. The FinCom would be greatly aided by a timely budget. So I think your points are all well-taken for next year, as far as determination of priorities, hearing from the voters, what is it that they want? If we have to tell people, next year, count on a 5% reduction in service among all departments, where would you like to see that come from? We don't have the time for that conversation in this budget cycle. And, and that's, that's the point I would, I would make, to your point. I appreciate the point. It's a valid point. The issue is whether it's a timely point for this year's budget cycle, so.
So I just, and I don't know if this is appropriate, there is basically a proposal on the table that has been, I don't, I don't know if I should go so far as recommended, because the recommended would be, we shut the door, as Barry said, and, you know, at one point to me, just shut the door and duke it out, not duke it out, but until we, until we get to a number.
Lock us in until we come up with a number.
Right.
That's it. Don't let anybody else.
So, but there is a proposal on the table that I assume is recommended by, well, I know that we have to come up with a number, but there are three proposals in front of you that's recommended by the superintendent. Derek, would I, could I ask through you to, whether that, the three proposals that are in front, that that is also the recommendation?
When I was, I know it's a simple yes or no question, but one of the things, I, the button, there's the big part, one of the things I was looking at was, I know that the Transportation Action Committee had met and made a recommendation on the non-net line, and that's one of the things I would like to see, where does that guy stand before, before we really go into this part here?
Okay.
Because that would be a difference to what the bottom-line deficit is, probably bring it closer to my understanding of $1,019,000 and change.
Well, I, I, I think, I think what's.
Barry, can we turn your microphone a bit?
Trust me, if I'm right. I think, what you're proposing here is a percentage. So if there happens to be a reduction in the amount we have to, to, of the deficit, the percentage of what we take from each side is, has nothing really to do with that. It really has to do with, can we agree that the schools 62 and we're 38, or whatever? Isn't that really what you're saying here, Barry?
Yes.
You're not actually saying, if the money gets reduced, or it grows, or whatever happens to it is really irrelevant. What we're saying is, can we come to the agreement of these percentages? That's what we're saying, right?
Of the deficit.
Right. Right.
Yes, whatever the deficit number is.
So, and if I understood it, you were at 65, right? And you're at 62?
Two, is what mine was.
So, uh, so that's three percentage points. Right?
Is the sender number?
The sender number, 6337, is that where we're at? Uh, that's not really right, because you can't divide it into half, it's actually 60, 60...
62 and a half.
Exactly.
63 and a half.
Exactly.
63 and a half.
Exactly.
63 and a half.
So, but, um, so, so I guess, that's, that's where we're at. You're there, they're there, and you're, we're here. That's where we're at at this point, is that correct?
Uh, percentage point-wise, yes.
Okay. All right. So, what do we need to do to get closer?
Closer to what?
Yeah. Well, what do we need to do to pull you guys closer together?
Split the difference.
There's a King Solomon right there. King Solomon just walked in.
Let's not forget, the baby was ultimately not cut in half.
Exactly.
Well, we can't count on that kind of divine intervention, Jeff.
It wasn't divine, the mother actually capitulated.
And I'm sorry, Jeff, you did have a question.
Yes, I did. Okay, go ahead. I actually think the non-net is a good example of, of why just arbitrarily coming closer together, splitting the baby, all of that stuff, is not a good idea. And even though I realize, time is relatively short, at least, there's not too much dispute on the facts. And I think there's not too much dispute about the fact that both the town side and the school side have been pretty frugal over the last 10 years, and it's not a spending problem. When it comes to non-net, I think the superintendent with the transportation manager has, has done a great job in coming up with something that I'll call the relatively low-hanging fruit, which is to say, we have been very generous with transportation services. We have also been very frugal, because we haven't privatized, and we've saved the town a lot of money. But, we have also made it clear that basically, anybody who wanted transportation, regardless of where they lived, and how close they lived to their school, it was going to be available to them. That is generous by almost any measure, and we haven't charged for that service. I think the superintendent's proposal, while it, it does not solve the ultimate problem of making sure that we have a reasonably modern fleet, for the purpose of providing the service, at least, it clearly provides a more than adequate level of service compared to what the state requires. It still goes beyond what the state does. And on top of that, in conversation with the transportation manager, he believes that if we went out and actually asked parents whether they want the service, that the number of students that would be denied service would actually be fewer than the model suggests. Specifically, we think perhaps 130 students who live with, less than a mile away, and are going to the middle and high school, would be denied service. There's all sorts of reasons to believe that that's the maximum number, and that many parents, and anecdotally, many students tell me, they've never used the bus, but they are still counted as being people, as people that need service. So, if we actually went out and said to parents, do you need service? It's quite possible that that 130 would diminish greatly, and we would still have the significant savings generated by the three-tier service. So, I actually think, to send a message to taxpayers, voters, citizens, that we're doing everything possible to be frugal, that this is something we probably should adopt. Now, I am only speaking for myself. I, well, I guess that's not true. The Transportation Action Committee did make that recommendation. So, I'm also speaking as a part of that committee. And if that is the relatively low-hanging fruit, then it seems to me, that should be cut to the 1.45, or whatever that number is, that was in the town administrator's proposal, before we start cutting anywhere else. Because there, we at least have a proposal that says we can, that works. My two cents.
As far as the bus transportation piece, which is the non-net spending, I believe we had already made a decision.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes?
I thought it was loud enough today.
It's for the, for the TV station.
I got into the action committee at the end, but my understanding was, at that meeting, and at that point there, we had decided that we were going to recommend and go ahead with that other program, which is basically, it'd be $1.45 million for the non-net spending for the transportation. And that was basically a done deal at that point. So, that basically should be off the table at this point.
Just a point of information, it was not a done deal for the school committee.
I didn't say that, but it's a done deal for the town side. Remember, it's, it's still town spending. This is a town expense. So, on my point of view, I think that, as far as I'm concerned, that is a done deal. But that's, that's one of the areas we have to do. It's not really a choice, and it's a matter at all, that's something that needs to be done. So, that should be netted out, and that should be off the table at this point.
Right, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think that the point Jeff was making is that, right, I understand, but we still have to vote on it, to take it out of the number that we voted on.
Understand.
Okay.
But it's non-net spending, it's the town side has to pay for it.
So, given that thought, and a little bit of what Jeff had talked about, so, in my analysis that I did, I included as an educational expense, transportation. So that if we lessen each line by non-net school spending, because that is a town expense, then the percentage of school spending actually would go down, and the town side would go up. So, we would be closer, probably, into the 50s, something. So, I agree with that.
What I'm trying to get at, Jeff, is the town actually has to take care of the transportation, the non-net spending. The school runs the system, the town doesn't.
I couldn't help myself.
So, I know you can't, but the bottom line is, it really should be, it should be a zero or a negative, because it should be to either side?
And, you made my point, Flumby.
And we will disagree also, as far as the, the Upper Cape folk. It's still, it's still a school expense to the town.
And, this was my point, that we could spend the next 10 hours...
That's why we need to get a percentage.
Going through this large document, and saying, Upper Cape, that's just an educational expense, it should be in the school side. Plowing that's done, that really should be a town expense, so, let's take that off. We can go back and forth, but we have to come up with a number. There's a, you know, whether we take the transportation off or not, there's at least a million-dollar problem that we share. And, what I'm hoping, is that at some time tonight, before midnight, we get to walk out that door, and I have a number to go back to work with my board on, that I have to cut 600,000, I have to cut 700,000, and Derek has to go to the Board of Selectmen and say, I have 400 to cut, and, you know, one of the priorities. And then each board does that, that they need to do. That's the hard work that has to be done. But first, we have to agree on what that percentage is, or what the number is, so that we can go out and do the work, and then support each other, you know, in that, instead of, you know, I mean, this is positive, that we are sitting across from one another, and we are discussing it, and nobody is getting uncooperative with one another, you know?
It's early.
Yes.
I'm only joking.
Give it another 10 minutes.
You know...
All right, pass that down to Ken.
I, you know, I totally agree with what Barry's saying here. Um, you know, what, what line items are going to ultimately get cut, you're going to decide, and what line items on our side, we're going to decide. We're really, I mean, we are, for all intents and purposes here, three percentage points away between what Derek agreed on, and what the superintendent agreed on. So, we're talking about three percentage points here, okay? I mean, this is pretty simple negotiation, the way I see it. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but if, we're three points away, sitting across each, at the table from each other. This should be relatively simple for us to come to some agreement. I, I just can't see why we can't come to some agreement on what the numbers are going to be. I mean, they came up, he brought the plan to us. Derek agreed with the plan, although they are three points apart. So, let's, let's talk about that. I mean, you know, what, how we restructure something down the road, how we spend money later on, how we do whatever, has nothing to do with this. We are in a cut situation, folks, that's it. It's going to be cut. We all know that, we all have to agree with that, there's no other way around it. We're going to cut right now, and none of us are going to like it. I'm not going to like it, you're not going to like it, the townspeople aren't going to like it. But there's no choice here. We're not going to come up with instant money in another, you know, in a couple of days, it's just not going to happen. So, why don't we get to the point, and if this is something we've already have, we already have an agreement here, we're just three points apart. So, let's talk about the three points, and how we're going to get closer to each other. Maybe there's a few other tweaks that we can put in here, that, you know, help your side and help our side, maybe there's some cost sharing we can do, something like that, that might help a little with this, you know what I'm saying? Let's, let's talk about that.
So, the, just the one thing, Jeff, before I go to you, since he raised his hand, is that, so, I'm in agreement with you, that when you take a look at this document, that we are, it's worth three percentage part, points apart. What I feel like that, I'm hearing, though, is that the actual percentages, so how the percentages were calculated, so forget if it was 62, if it was 65, how those percentages were calculated, is where there is a, a little bit of, of angst. I, when first talked to Dr. Rubenovich, and, you know, the conversations that went on in Derek, this is the proposal that he's absolutely bringing forward. So, the, I think the only thing that I want to ask of this board here, is if there, if A, if, if that's the crux, or initiative that you had, since you're seeing this for the first time, and then, how do we get comfortable with the, either, the proposal that Barry and Derek are putting in front of us? And if there's not a comfort level there, then there needs to be a suggested way that we come up with a new percentage.
I get what you're saying, one thing.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying, because, but don't forget, Derek came up with his number by doing the calculations his way, what had to be in it, and what didn't. And Barry came up with his way, by what was in it. So, they all, so, at this point, they both did it their way, and came up with what they were comfortable with. So, it's still only leaves us three points apart.
Right, right. What I mean is how, I think they both agreed, that it was a, that, that there was a 62, between 62 and 65, and, and 30, that, that is what I'm talking about. And what I'm hearing from this, and I'm not going to speak, I'll, I'll allow Jeff to probably make his point, but it's more about a feeling that maybe the, the dollar calculation is different because of some of the, the factors that play into this. And that's the debate that I'm afraid that we're going to go down, I hope we don't go down, but I need to be able to get some sort of comfort on this, on this side, that, that the proposal that Barry is putting in, in front of us, with, after conversations with Derek, is the right one for us to then debate between this, the three points that you're talking about.
Yeah.
I, I think I agree.
Well, yeah, I, I think I agree with what you're saying. I'm not sure that we got it to the same way. But, you know, when he did his calculation to come up with 65, he took the other school out of it. Barry did his to come to 62, he left it in. See what I'm saying? So, they've already dealt with those sort of issues about how the number was built.
Yeah.
All right? So, that still leaves them only three points apart.
Right, no, I'm with you.
So, at this point, we have a pretty good deal. Because now, we're only talking about three percentage points, and the rest, we can forget about, because they've already got a deal. So, let's talk about the three points. Why, why, why beat a dead horse here? That's my point.
Yep.
I think we have other people we have to hear from.
Yeah, sorry.
Wait, Jeff was first, and then I'll go to you, Mike.
Well, just, just a question. I can, I think I can assert, unless I missed a meeting, that while we have a great deal of... I think I can assert, unless I, unless I missed a meeting, that while we have a great deal of respect for the work that the superintendent does, he was not empowered to negotiate on behalf of the school committee a percentage. And I would like to know whether the town administrator was empowered by the Board of Selectmen to negotiate a percentage.
He absolutely was, right? To negotiate with the parent.
So, whatever number Derek came up with, that was fine with you?
Well, if you're asking, did we formally vote on a number? No, we haven't.
Was he empowered, was he empowered to negotiate on behalf of the Board of Selectmen?
He always is.
So, whatever number he came up with, you were going to sign off on?
Not necessarily, we needed to hear about it.
Well, exactly, so...
And we, we're hearing about it.
The school committee is hearing about it for the first time tonight, and...
So are they.
Fine. So, for you to suggest that we're three points apart, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't feel we're three points apart.
Well, I guess then, perhaps the proper way to couch it is, each board's administrator is three points apart from each other.
I can live with that, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a slightly smaller subset of, everybody agrees we're three points apart.
Yes.
But they're the guys who have to run it, and live with it, you see? And they're the ones, Barry obviously thinks he can run it that way. And obviously, the town administrator thinks he can run it that way.
Excuse me, Barry thinks he needs $2 million more to run it properly, and he's made that very clear over the last six months. Get out.
Exactly.
You don't need to.
I was going to use you and raise you a half, I thought.
I get that.
All right, so, Mike?
Well, so is the Jeff point, I'm just going to say, when I was leaving, when I was leaving, come here today, wife asked me, how long, how long is the meeting going to be? I said, it's either going to be really quick, or really, or really long. And to Patrick's point, I mean, I, I agree with Patrick, I think, you know, and if you want to put the caveat and say, yeah, it's the town administrator and the superintendent that are three points apart. It can be a really quick meeting, if we, if we focus on those three points. But, given what Mr. Swett said, I'd like to know how many points he'd like to see.
At this point, you got to be...
Point of information, what was the agenda for tonight?
To discuss the fiscal 2014 budget.
Guiding principles? I seem to remember something about it being related to principles.
Michelle, do you have it?
Guidance on town priorities and potential cuts.
Right. So, to me, I thought this was going to be a high-level meeting, to try and get to a process by which we could come to, perhaps, a percentage. What I feel like I'm being asked to do, is to quickly agree on a percentage, and I'm not prepared to do that tonight, and I didn't think the agenda was going to ask me to do that tonight. And I can assure you, when it comes to spreadsheets, and I suspect Derek feels the same way, I can make spreadsheets do the polka. You know, I don't, this is not about spreadsheets, to me, this is about how we do this, and yes, people have said, very accurately, this is all about cutting. I get that, okay? But, what, when we talk about cutting, $100,000, 100 here, 100, 500,000, that's frequently real people, real services, real impact. And I feel a huge responsibility, and I suspect everybody else does as well, to get it right. And I am very uncomfortable with simply saying, all right, 60, 63 and a half, we're done, let's go have a drink. I just can't do that.
Well, to that point, I would ask Mr. Sullivan, if he is willing to project, in terms of all other departments other than the school, what 63 and a half percent means? What does it mean to the bottom line of, of all, of all the other departments? How does the variance between...
You mean the 38, or the...
Yeah. Exactly, that, yeah, our percentage.
Yeah, the 38 percent.
The 37.5, how does that, i- i- if we indeed went down the middle on that? What does that, what, what does that generally mean? What can you tell us in terms of impacts to specific departments, impacts to personnel? And again, this isn't, I, I don't think this is by way of going to devolve into a conversation of the Board of Selectmen having a separate meeting here, talking about, well, we like this, we don't like that, you need to move money here. That's not the purpose of this, this is illustrative solely. So, I think that might be helpful, if we heard from our respective administrators on that score, to the extent that they have indeed planned for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I'd really like to, everybody, to go through with everybody, is, when I'm looking at it, how I'm walking down the numbers, if I could. And unfortunately, I just did everything on 6535, so, not to be obstinate, it's the numbers I have written down here, so, you can probably give or take on 2 percent. When I was looking at the budgets, if we brought the non-net to the 1.45, we know that would be a reduction of about $26,000 versus the FY '13 projected. The 35, the 6535 split, on now what would essentially be the new deficit of $1,018,038, would be $661,725, reduced from the school committee's last voted request. It would be $356,313, reduced from the town's level-funded budget. Which means, if we're going through it on the town side, if you turn to page 3 of 5, we would have, where $10,165,000... five, we would have, where ten million, one-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars is level-funded, we would now have a nine million, seven-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-four, four-dollar budget. The school's approximate level for non-net, or excuse me, for net would be twenty-five million, four-hundred-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Not grossly increased, but an increase. That's where I looked at it from walking through it, so that everybody can see in my mind what I was looking at. Now, when you're speaking about what can be lost in the town side, I know some people will call them cultural articles. That's where, where we'd go, towards the library, towards the Council on Aging. But realistically, almost fifty percent of the town side budget is the police department. That's what's going to get hit. We're going to lose officers out of there. It's not, it's not a scare tactic, it's a fact. That is our biggest proportion of the budget. When I went through this, it would be approximately three full-time employees out of the, out of the police department, giving a value of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. That would leave me with an additional two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars to make up. Inspection Services Department, each one of them has a function and brings in the money. We don't have, we actually have too little staff in there, and we saw what happened when we didn't have enough in the Inspection Services. This budget's still, if you look out of my administration, this is before we even got to what's called the level-funded, we cut the form of the financial analyst position. I can tell you I'm going crazy. I would like to have that sort of help. You know, municipal maintenance, the other day, I had for the entire town, three staff members for the entire town. I get calls every day, why their streets haven't been swept, why streets haven't been graded. You know, we don't have enough people in there already. If you were able to see the finance committee meeting where they went over the budgets, that department that used to have a staff of fifty-three has a total of, I believe, seventeen. Two are administrative, four foremen, one, one director, if you will, and then, I believe, six, six labors and four custodians. I have one custodian at night for three buildings. The other day, the custodian came in and found a homeless man in the multi-service center who had stayed there over the night. I don't have enough people to go through there, to even check the rooms, or to be safe doing that. We are going to lose services, plain and simple. Just like, I understand that this budget or these splits is not enough for the school. I'll be the first one to tell everyone. That's also why I'm, I'm supporting fully the textbooks for the school. I know we can't afford to buy it, but we can afford to borrow it, and the technology aspect of that as well. So I know this is a long, convoluted statement, but this budget, if it went forward on the sixty-five, thirty-five split, is devastating to pride both sides, or definitely both sides. But yes, it's a devastating split. I looked at it, if we were to absorb, let's call it the whole nine-hundred thousand to a million, I would have to cut twenty-four employees. If we did it as a full-time employee list to what the school was, that's an equiv, excuse me, equivalent of eighty-seven employees. So I understand a percentage is not the best way to go about it, or the correct, if we will, for the long term, but it's where we currently stand at being able to function.
Before you, I think that what, I think is an important question, an important thing to do is absolutely to talk about what these cuts are going to do. I think that you've heard it over and over on the school side, what these cuts are going to do to us. And so, I mean, I'll ask Barry if he wants to speak, but I don't, I think that what we know generally, that, is that this budget is going to hurt. It's going to sting, and it's been coming for a long time. It still doesn't, it, it, it doesn't help the fact that we still have to cut. There, there's no way around it for this year. I think that, you know, again, we talk about what goes into next year. So again, I, I want, I definitely would like us to get to a point where both boards are comfortable with a percentage, because I think that's the only thing that we can do at this time. If, I think that if we do a number, that's going to be a moving target, so basically a percentage. I think that that's an important activity that, that we have talked about and what, the reason why we're here today. At the end of the day, we have to provide, have a balanced budget going into town meeting. I saw his, his first, okay.
I'll defer.
Thank you. I actually listened to all nine-plus hours of the finance committee meetings with the respective departments. The yellow notes are things that say OMG, or yikes, or you're kidding, or, you know, they are my reactions, from which I then generated, what, a two-page memo, I think, to Mr. Sullivan, with questions about what is the income side of, for instance, the Council on Aging? The Council on Aging's, we, from the town side, and I'm not picking on the Council on Aging, I'm old enough to belong to it, I do belong to it. So let's get that right out on the table before the boys do. Say it costs us eighty thousand dollars. There's two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of grant money that comes in that actually supports that department. If we were to cut that department, not only would we lose the department, we would also lose the funding, okay? So it's not as simple as it appears. And one of the suggestions I've made to Mr. Sullivan is that next year, his department has, who did a spectacular job, by the way. I mean, absolutely spectacular job, and the finance committee's questions to them were outstanding. This is, this is ouch. It's big ouch. And it is cutting back numbers, it's not filling slots that are unreasonable not to fit, fill. It is unreasonable to run a corporation of fifty-five billion dollars with the scant financial resources in terms of bodies to watch the numbers and process the numbers that we have been doing. It's appalling, quite frankly, that we have gotten to this stage. And I would add to what somebody said, yeah, this year it hurts. Next year, you're all going to be on IVs. Because this is not as bad as it's going to get. It's going to get worse. It cannot get better until it gets worse. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just a quick point. If you take out the chapter seventy from both the denominator and the numerator, which I would argue is an appropriate thing to do, it comes to fifty-one percent, not sixty-two I think we also need to recognize that round numbers there are between students and parents. Let's call it a little over half of our full-time residents. I'm sorry, about a third of our full-time residents, I was counting voters, not, sorry. About a third of our full-time residents are fully impacted by the quality of the education that we provide. Forget about property values, forget about all those things that we talk about, about why we should have a good education. But if you just look at who gets impacted by the cuts? Every time we do, and here's just an example, when we create study halls so large, you have to use the cafeteria or the auditorium for study halls, because there are no teachers to provide the classes, that's huge. Now, I really, I'm violating my own rule. I think when we get into anecdotes about how horrible it is, it really isn't all that constructive or productive. But I just had to counterbalance the awful things that Derek pointed out, because they're real as well. But the one difference is that when we do something to the schools, we're impacting a third of our population, and that should never be forgotten. And we're impacting the most vulnerable, the people who can't vote, and the people that are going to pay the price, literally, for the rest of their life.
Question?
Me?
Do you want me to just call people out? I don't know, I don't know the protocol, whether you should basically do your part and I do my part.
While I, while I tend to agree somewhat with what Mr. Swett said, if, if there's no police, you impact a hundred percent of the citizens. And many of those forty-nine percent that you've left out are taxpaying citizens who expect some kind of service from the town. I thought, as my good friend, Mr. Slavin, always talks about, I thought we were going to talk about areas, he talks about regionalization all the time. We kind of been regionalized between our school department and our town, and that's what I thought we were going to try to talk about. When you use Mrs. Whiteside's line-by-line comparisons in her book, and it's quite a few Post-it notes. When I look at just the library, for example, on the expense side of the equation, it's four-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. I'm not saying that this is what we should do, but I was hoping to entertain a conversation where maybe you have a library here, we're sitting in a library, kind of comes to mind. There's a library we may have down this driveway, too. And rather than have, we have one library across the street, we have one in Onset, we have one here, too, we have one in the high school, too. You know, why don't we talk about, or consider at some point, making one of them a public library? One. Maybe in the high school, I think it's a little bigger. And then, we're combining forces, we're, we're regionalizing the town, so to speak, we're compromising, we're working together. This isn't working together, keeping six libraries open, and everybody spending money working on libraries. I'm not a hater of libraries, and, and a lot of my good friends support the public library, and they support spinning. But if we're really, truly talking as a town, I tried this with the CFO position, just take a library, we're sitting in one, and maybe we make it available to the public, and we bring in additional books or whatever, we find a room, and we make a public library that's accessible to students and is accessible to the pub. We'll figure out the security of that later. But at least throw it on the table. That's what I thought we were going to talk about.
Can I just answer? Unfortunately, because of budget cuts, the library at Minut has been closed, the library at Deccus has been closed, and there is no librarian to this room.
Only one librarian.
We have one librarian-
But we have a couple over there, Barry. We've talked about this before. We have librarians across the street, right? And in Onset, and we could try to share. What I'm saying is, we only have so much money to spend. And we, and instead of having resources here, and resources there, and buildings here, we got to start to bring that together, or, as Mrs. Whiteside said, there's no magic bullet for revenue, you're not all of a sudden going to get a bunch of revenue. We need to work with what we got. And I don't see that coming out of this. That's what I thought we were going to try to do.
So just the, just one thing regarding that. I, I think coming up with creative ideas on how we can share resources, how we can, how we can share responsibilities, how, I think those are all important questions or conversations to have. The way that I saw those conversations, because something like the library is on the town side, that that would be something that would first be discussed as a board and with the town administrator, and then making a proposal to the schools, and then having that conversation there. It's the same thing if we're talking about, you know, plowing or an expense on our side that we see an opportunity to partner with the town. It should absolutely be something that we have a conversation on every single week. What are things in the budget that we can then, you know, collapse or combine, and then provide a proposal? And then talking about each one of those individually. Because something, Steve, that I think is a, is a great thing to explore, there's so many pieces that probably need to be discussed and researched offline on whether that's a viable proposal.
I just think that, I, I agree with you that more discussion needs to take place, but what are, you're talking three years down the road, and we need to act. We need to stop talking, we need to act. That's my attitude about it.
I agree with you.
And if you start with meetings and this and all, it just, it's the same old thing, and we'll be sitting here a year from now doing the same thing, and I'm trying to change that direction.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm with you.
Just to Mr. Holmes' point, and maybe to Mrs. Whiteside's point, I, I too wasn't sure what we were going to discuss, and if we're going to get into the things such as that. But I agree with, I think, Peter, who said, basically, that's a discussion for June nineteenth. I mean, we, we can't solve that now. And everything, you'll, you'll notice, I'm not really talking much, because everything I'm focusing on is really June nineteenth, I mean, really hit the ball, hit the ground running and, and, you know, work together, big time. But, but right now, we got to, we got to come up with a number supposedly, as, as Jeff pointed out, you know, we, we started this sort of looking at it as two million dollars. And me, for myself, I kind of focused, when we got to like one point seven million dollars. And at that point, we had a decision to cut or not, and for, to cut further or not, and we did. And part of that was pretty easy. I mean, the town administrator had given, had supported us with the bond. And at our workshop, the superintendent was very clear, he said, this is not from the school committee, this is not from the superintendent, this is from the town administrator, something he's never seen in five years of being a superintendent. And that, that goes to the, the good faith, that definitely, you're bringing to the table and the trust that's there. And so we also, we also had known retirements. I mean, in my opinion, we couldn't in good faith, you know, go forward having these known retirements if we could save the money. So we cut those, too. But I, like you, Mrs. Whiteside, I, I watched all of those finance committee meetings, all of them. All of them. And, and that's, if we could, they're great for anyone that wants to watch them, they really are. But, but what was interesting is, I said that we, we accounted for our retirements. And I noticed, like, when, and let me know if I'm getting too much into the weeds here, but, but we, we, we noticed we have, like, planned retirements, they're planned, we can recount on them, we can save that money. But for some reason, in the police department, that notion gets tipped upside down on its head, and you can't account for them, for some reason, I think, if I, if I inferred correctly, because of these payouts that you have to do for the outgoing people, that's, you got to pay out like sixty thousand bucks, and you can't rehire anyone until that's done. Is that right?
We had two retirees from the sergeants' level, which were the last of the hundred percent sick leave buyout contracts. They were each approximately thirty thousand for a total of sixty thousand dollars. The harsh part about that is you need a shift, you need a sergeant for each shift, so we had to increase patrolmen to go into that line, and the patrolmen's shifts are then covered with overtime. There's actually effectively no way to make that money up. You'd now go into a death spiral.
So, so you're saying that's because of an older union contract, and that now, moving forward, you won't have that problem?
Not as high in the sick leave, but there's still sick leave buyout.
I remember, I remember the FinCon being really confused about it, I mean, discussing it, and I, basically, you're, you're saying you can't plan for this, you'd have to, I think you said you had to actually account for one layoff per, per, per year to account for it, if you wanted to go that route.
I think what you're asking is, do we budget in our, in our budgets for retirement? No. We've reduced our budgets to such a lean level that we don't have the padding for retirements.
All right. I'm just saying, that's how we got to our, what I thought was seven hundred thousand, and now it's, it's more than that, but- and now it's, it's more than that. But, but that's how we got there. And, and now it's, now, now we're into the bone, you know?
Kenny?
I just want to say that I agree 100% with Patrick. I looked at this as 63, 36, 30, whatever. I actually flunked math, but I knew it was a 3%, 3% difference.
Don't tell anybody else.
Now, I know my colleague, Mr. Swett, made, made comments about whether Mr. Sullivan was empowered by the board of selectmen, or whether the superintendent is or was by the school committee. The way I look at it, he's a chief financial officer for the school, so I don't expect myself to micromanage. I would expect the superintendent to go out and do that type of work. For the first time since I've been on this school committee, I can actually see a good working relationship between the two chief officers of the town. And, and I put the utmost faith in it that both of them have worked through this process and realize that we're in a cut mode, as everyone has alluded to. So to start talking about things down the road, I agree, Mr. Holmes made a comment about libraries and things, those are things that we have to look going forward. But right now, we have to address the situation. We could be here until Thanksgiving, but it's still, as Mr. Slavin said, a 3% difference, and that's what we should be talking about. And the two things that I absolutely cringe at cutting is in the school system and in the police department. And right now, both sides are telling us that those things could happen, so everyone is going to feel the brunt of it. I just think that we, as committee, should come to an agreement on this percentage and not try to micromanage the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. I also would point out that the charter demands that the, that the town administrator, you know, directs the town administrator to put together a budget. He is our CEO. We are not to meddle in the day-to-day affairs. And while I think each of the members of this board have had, you know, memos or conversations with each other saying, oh, you know, what about this budget? Well, and then you get talked out of it. Every one of us has said, except for the people who haven't spoken, it is a cutting night. I think really the only thing we're talking about is whether we're talking 62% or 65% or whatever. I'd also remind you that I probably am the one, I don't know what you do, I'm, I'm the one who has seen most close up the effects of a crummy educational system. And with all due respect to my previous boss and bosses, I was asked to do the impossible. I got paid good money, but I had no supplies. So when you tell me that it's going to be painful, well, it was painful when I was there. It was beyond painful when I was there. And I will never forget a child who said to me, because we didn't have enough books, "Mrs. Whiteside, why doesn't the town care about us? I may be poor, but I'm not dumb." She was poor, she was not dumb, to my knowledge, other than graduating from the high school. That is her accomplishment. So I agree with Mr. Swett. We have, we are not doing the best by that third who cannot speak for themselves. However, my tax bill, and I, it doesn't say school on it, it says town of where him and what our district. Okay? So I, I honestly would urge us to not be here until Thanksgiving. One, we can't be legally. We have to be out of here by June 18th. And two, to come to grips with that 2%, 3%, or if Mr. Swett's math, if you want to talk and accept Mr. Swett's math, then it would be 12%, right? So I would urge us to go back to the concept of talking about the, the, what the two CF, was CEOs have done, which is come as close to they can without a head-on collision.
So what I'm going to ask at this time is that we did talk about 3%. If you split it down the middle at 63.5 and 36.5, we do not have a vote on the, or a vote on the agenda tonight, so there's, not asking for a vote.
Neither do I.
Right. So, but I think that there needs to be a discussion on whether, on what is, what is on the agenda for a meeting that we have on 5/15, okay? And that meeting on 5/15 is either that the town administrator and the superintendent go back to their boards and discuss what is, what's there right now, which is 63.5 and 36.5, or discuss that there's 3% in between. And then that 15th is really coming back and saying, I've talked to my board, this is where we're at, and, and then having that discussion all over again. Or, I don't know what the or was, but that, that's one agenda. So that, that is one agenda that can happen, and then actually put on there for vote. So then on the 15th, we could, because remember, there are two very important things that we, we have to get done before the end of this month, and if we can get it done sooner, great, is that not only do we have to vote on a percentage, or come to an agreement on a percentage of how we're going to cut the deficit, but then also, each one of the boards has to go back, they have to talk about where they're going to cut it and agree to that. The superintendent, the town administrator have to make those presentations. And then we have to take those recommendations and give it to the FinCom, so then they have an opportunity to review it and provide their input into it also. And that all has to happen before June 18th. So, so we can either have a consensus here that we're close enough, they're going to work it out, we're going to come back and vote on the 15th, or we basically say, this is not working, and we have to figure out another agenda item for the 15th. Yes?
I agree with you. Thank you. I, I agree with that. And let's say that we assumed 63.5, 36.5. What I've been hoping for, for the last two weeks, is for the administrator and the superintendent, I'd like to come back at our next meeting. I don't know why it has to be the 15th, but today's the first, I would think we could do something next week. But I'd love to come back to a meeting and assume 63.5, 36.5, and have two slides only up on that screen, one from the superintendent and one from the town administrator, saying, if we accept 63.5, 36.5, here's what happens. We talked about this two and a half weeks ago, and I'd like to see that happen. And then, sitting here talking about numbers in virtual space is crazy, because you can't really put your finger on it. But if they both put up a screen that says, I'm sorry, here's what it is, then we could have a vote and say, yeah, we can accept that, or no, we can't. And maybe there's some wiggle room there as well. But I'd like to see that. I know Mr. Sullivan sent out an email a couple of weeks ago that if, and he looks like he's already done, I think they've already done the work, and that's why I'm saying to you, if we could have a meeting next week, we could see those two slides. We can't post anything before Sat, before Monday, anyway. But if we could have a meeting next Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Monday, and put those two slides up there, we can get done a lot sooner than May 15th. That's just my opinion.
To that point, Chairman Vugan had shown a lot of foresight, and it provided sort of a five-week schedule. And what, what the schedule said was, meet today, next week, the administrators, along with Chairman Vugan and I, would meet, then we'd come back on the 15th, then on the 22nd, the chairman and the administrators would meet again, and then on the 29th, the final, and then off to FinCom. There's no reason, as you say, why that process cannot be accelerated, because I frankly didn't expect to come in here tonight and even be this close.
Chairman, I, I would, with all due respect, I'd say two superintendents and the two meeting, two chairman meeting is a wasted meeting.
We don't need to. They've done the work.
And just so you know, the only reason why that was in the original one was because how far apart we were, and that this-
Let's do that meeting next week, and we can get this done next week.
I agree. I agree.
We can get it to finance next week and, and be ahead of the game instead of being sitting somewhere. They need time to go through this.
They do. And I agree with that. I, I believe that Chairman Vugan put that schedule together frankly without, and I didn't anticipate it either.
Yeah, we can change the schedule.
Sure, we can. We're not bound to it. We're not hidebound to the schedule. And the other piece is, they've done the work, as you say. So is that-
Right.
I'm getting a consensus here.
So the proposal, we have a school committee meeting next Wednesday, but the proposal in here was the 8th from 5:30 to 6:30. But don't know if an hour is enough time, or if even the, the group can meet next Wednesday from 5:30 to 6:30. So is there another date that would work?
Maybe we can meet at 6:30 during your meeting.
We have a full agenda already.
This is important. With all due respect, this is very important.
100%.
Why is it we can't come at 5:30? And if it carries a little in?
We have recognition, I've invited people who've served 30 years, 40 years.
Can you come on Tuesday night? I'm sure the chairman will clear our agenda.
Don't take us not clearing our agenda as a sign that we don't feel this is important. It absolutely is this-
I'm not, I'm not, Mrs. Vugan. What I'm saying is, we suggested meeting next week, let's do it.
Let's just do it.
Yeah, and I think that's exactly where we're getting to, 100% with you.
I have not, I have not yet, my practice is to do a draft agenda to the members on Wednesday and submit a final for posting on, on Thursday. So we do not, as of yet, have an agenda for Tuesday night. If, if, if you can get-
A quorum there?
A quorum, and if you can get your members there on Tuesday night, I'm more than happy to move the regular board of selectmen meeting off till Wednesday. It makes no difference to me. I got to be there both nights, anyway, so.
We appreciate that. And again, I think that would have been a conversation on our end.
I wasn't even suggesting that.
But we can do it. We'll do it. It's a foot flap.
We've invited somebody that can come.
So, so 6:30 on the 7th?
How does that work with our compadres at WCTV? They're used to getting us at 7.
7th, Jeff? Okay. Mike, 6:30, 7th?
At the multi-service center?
At the multi-service center.
You know more than anyone. We're meeting on Monday, too. I mean, Monday, Tuesday.
This is, with all due respect, I would much rather, with all due respect, I'd much rather be able to look you in the eye and sit in the same size seat.
Okay, so we can try to do it back here.
We do that now, room.
I don't, I don't sit in the same class.
You guys have- You guys have bigger chairs.
Well, let's, let's, maybe we should check with our, our broadcast crew here.
It's still doable on Tuesday. It's, I just need to know ahead of time so I can plan stuff.
Okay. So right now, I have, I have three members that can be there. And Kenny, you'll let me know, right? Or, yes? I'm not going to make you commit here. We'll have a quorum on the 7th.
I'm going to sneer them down.
So, so the proposal on the table right now is coming back here on Tuesday, the 7th, at 6:30, for the purposes of discussing the FY14 cut in the budget and taking a vote on the-
Yeah, possible vote, that's what I'm going to-
A possible note on the, the percentage of those cuts.
Now, last question.
What time? The superintendent is going to present those two slides and say, if you accept this, here's what happens.
Will, will WCTV be able, then, to carry our meeting on Wednesday, board of selectmen over in the multi-service center?
We're going to have a meeting on Wednesday at the same time as they're having a school committee meeting here.
Yes.
It could technically be done to two different channels. I don't have anyone at the selectmen's meeting right now, but I can probably find someone. It all depends on my current two members. One is Bob White, and the other one's Derek. Drink water, Derek works. Bob does it, but it depends on what's going on with the FinCom.
Bob might disagree with your assessment there, but anyway.
But if this is a meeting or something, then he's tied up, and then I don't have anyone that's with him.
So hold on, so, yeah, so just so you know, there, there was a suggestion of doing our meeting Thursday in this room. So Thursday at 6:30 in this room. Our meeting. Yes, our meeting. So then you would have yours on Tuesday, we would have ours on Wednesday, and then we would meet in here on Thursday. That does then give-
That's less disruption.
It's less disruption, and also gives an opportunity for each one of the members of their respective boards to be able to go back, talk with their town administrator, and have another conversation.
Well, what, what is, why don't we each poll our boys and see who can make it?
Thursday at 6:30? Since you brought it up, you're an I.
So moved.
June 9th is ringing a bell, but I'd have to call my wife.
May 9th.
May 9th.
Oh, yeah.
We're not in June yet.
Wow, you're an eager fellow, aren't you?
No, no, so, I think so, yes, I think so.
Okay, so May 9th? Jeff, or Barry, sorry?
No, no, that's the 31st.
All right, so wait.
I'll start at the end. This room here, at 6:30?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
You don't have anything saying this.
Oh, man, you're doing live, right?
So it's done.
Okay, there's some-
Before we end up, then, we still have the issue, what are we using for a net number? Because the numbers right now are different, it's what the, what the outstanding deficit is. We have 1.1, 69, whatever, and if we take out, again, the transportation piece, it's 1019.
A non-net.
1019.
There has to be a vote before it can be taken off, and the next meeting of the school committee is the 8th.
I understand. I'm just asking, because Derek, who will be presenting, probably is the 1019, that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay.
If anyone can answer it, legally, that's the number that the school committee presents the town meeting, right, the net and the non-net? Okay.
Go to the microphone.
We need to remember, from a legal perspective, there is a very different relationship between the school committee and the school's budget, and the board of selectmen, and the town's budget. It's just different.
Is there anything else that we felt that we needed to bring up today, tonight? So I'll just, I, I just want to thank everyone for their commitment, their time towards this process, and also having an open mind going into this. Again, it is going to be devastating. And that's the main reason why we have to continue these conversations and start talking about how, again, to be able to bring more revenue into this town as well as consolidate services, so.
The devastation will not be this. This is a temporary.
I know, next year.
The devastation is starting. We actually sit down and talk, well, we have a good-
Right.
Mrs. Chair, motion for the school portion of this meeting to adjourn.
And I will take that. I know that there was somebody who was talking. Okay, I will accept that, that motion. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
You got it.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Troppiano, seconded by Selectman Slavin. All in favor? Aye. 5-0-0.
Adjourn.
Thank you.